So, we'll get started because I wanted to give time for if you all had any questions or suggestions you'd like to make. Today's town hall meeting, as promised, is on safety and security on campus, and I do have some reports on follow-up since I last sent out the email. I do want, and Kelly Enos, our faculty co-chair, sent out an email along with Michael Allen regarding the status of vetting the self-evaluation report. We are like 99% done with the report, so let's give ourselves a hand. Some of us are still so enthralled with this report that we can't, we're getting, our eyeballs are getting tired, and we're still working hard on it. I know besides Kelly Enos and Vice President Michael Allen, we have Dean Isabel Saber helping us, Darlene Montes, Madeline Hernandez, and those are just a few that are in the middle of finishing up the report. It's coming together nicely, so I'm really glad to report that. We are submitting it to the district November 25th, a week from tomorrow. It will go to the district, who will then prepare it for the board meeting for December 9th for the board to approve it. You all know that it was approved and recommended for approval by the Board Committee, the Institutional Effectiveness Student Success Committee, a couple of weeks ago. They came on campus and accepted our report and approved it for approval by the entire board. So, we're going to have a week for you to read it. It will be put in a, I believe, online on our website. You'll have an opportunity to read it and make comments to the co-chairs regarding the report. It will then go to the Academic Senate for their approval December 3rd at their December 3rd meeting, so that gives you about a week, or a little bit less than a week to kind of get any feedback you want to give on the report. I also want to thank Carolyn Daly for helping us editing the report, so we have a, you know, a good English cleanup of the report, and it does have a voice. Then it'll, December 3rd, go to the Academic Senate. I've asked the College Council if we could have a special meeting on December 3rd right after the Senate report, so they can approve it as well. Then it's ready to go to the 9th to the board. So that's where we are on the accreditation. Any questions? Great. Okay, so today I wanted to focus on safety and security, and I did bring this topic up to the president's council, all the nine presidents, as well as the chancellor and his cabinet, to see what other campuses are doing, where they are, but to relay the interest and concerns of my campus with the other campuses. And they did give me some very positive feedback. So, these were the steps that I sent out in our last, in my last communication with you after the meeting with the AFT Faculty Guild. Emergency kits will be purchased and placed in every classroom. Danny Villanueva, Vice President Villanueva, and Wally Bortman are researching those emergency kits. They range in different prices, but we're beginning to focus on two or three that we think will work. Of course, they'll have first aid capacity, so you could administer any first aid, but as well as other emergency materials that you may need. So, we decide to, we're going to put those in every classroom. Now, one of the things that, and I'll say right up front now, all the presidents looked at me and said, "How are you going to fund this? Little Mission, you're doing all this stuff." But I did look to the chancellor and say, "Well, you know, we may need assistance by the district for safety and security," which is a high priority. So, we're going to find the funding for all this activity. Maps are being prepared. Wally's got those almost complete. They'll be accurate maps. They'll be placed in every single classroom. Room numbers will also be placed in every single classroom, so that if an adjunct comes in and they're inside a room and there's an incident, they don't need to go outside to figure out what room they're in. Now, this may sound like a very simple task, but it is important, especially in emergency situations. And emergency telephone numbers will be posted in every classroom. Now, one of the things the presidents say, "Well, why can't people use their cell phones?" I said, "Well, guess what? Verizon doesn't work too well here at Mission." Is, how many of you Verizon people? Okay, so you can attest to it, right? And we do, we did put into, for some time, Vice President Villanueva has been pushing the board to get a tower here, and the board has not put it on the agenda yet, so we're trying to get that worked out. An emergency phone system that allows direct contact to the campus sheriff office and activates the speaker system to announce emergencies will be installed in every classroom. Happy to say that our IT director, Rod Austria, has looked into this. He's beginning to give me some estimates of what it'll cost. Many of the buildings have the infrastructure, so we can just install the phones because we have the network wiring necessary. Some of the buildings are older, so we may have to do some additional work there. The idea is that there would be a phone in the classroom that you can dial out for emergency, or if something comes up that you need immediate assistance, but it'll also be a speaker system. So, while you're teaching, you know, the speaker may go on and say, "There's an incident at Collaborative Studies Building. You're in CMS. Lockdown is necessary," or vice versa. It'll also, we're looking at the possibility, and I'll talk a little later about panic buttons associated with these phones as well. It may be doable to do both with the same system. So, Rod has done an assessment. He's come up with what it would probably cost to do the existing systems and to add new systems. We are looking at a hefty price, but again, I'm seeking assistance from the district to help fund this activity. There is discussion around bond funds for our buildings in terms of technology. There are some funds available through the bond program for technology. So, we're looking at possibly putting our phone system on that list, so the bond will pay for it. Initially, we look, we're looking at a couple of hundred thousand dollars just for the existing buildings, but discussion was, "What do you do about the library? What do you do about Campus Center Main? What do you do about offices? What do you do about areas that are common areas that don't necessarily have the wiring?" So, we discussed that and said, "Well, let's get a cost estimate for that, too. Culinary arts, the servery, what do you do about that? Where does that phone go? Where does the speaker go?" So, there's still a lot of homework to be done, but we recognize what we want is the entire campus to be wired with this technology. So, we're going to go after those funds in the bond program to help defray the cost. We are the best campus with cameras. You should know, no other campus has the number of cameras we have. We're the best campus through the bond program with infrastructure. If you take a look at Trade Tech, or you take a look at Valley, or the older campuses, they're far behind us with regard to this kind of technology. When the president's asked, "Well, how are you going to pay for this? This is going to cost me $3, $4 million." The answer is, a lot of it's already installed, because we had forethought in our building program to ensure that we had connectivity. So, that's what is putting us in a good position to move forward with that phone system. Emergency fire drill will occur this November, so we're, a training video will be sent to faculty staff to prepare for the fall. We're not telling you when, it's just going to happen. So then we can debrief after that and talk about what worked, what didn't work, but it'll be a fire drill. And the training video will be put on the website. I think, Wally's not here, but we were talking about getting it available to you on, there's Wally. So, we were going to put that training video, the fire department, right? You contacted them. So, we'll get that on the website in the next couple of days, and expect sometime before Thanksgiving, or after Thanksgiving, when you get back, a fire drill. An active shooter drill will be initiated in the spring of 2016. This active shooter drill is a very comprehensive, complicated, complex drill. It includes not just the sheriff, but it includes other law enforcement agencies, SWAT teams, the whole nine yards. So, it's something I've asked for. Captain Tartwiler has agreed, but we're going to have to plan for it, because it's rather extensive. So, that's going to happen, but we are planning to do a, Captain Tartwiler is going to be available on campus. I think she's talking about November 23rd. We will announce it. Not the 23rd, what's today? The 17th? Yeah, Tuesday the 20, is it Tuesday or Monday the 23rd? Yeah, okay. So, we'll get you an announcement. That's going to be start training. What that is, is the mental health unit that's attached to our sheriff's department that's going to train, will provide you information and training of what to do when you perceive a student or an individual that has some issues, that could be considered mental health issues, who may want to harm themselves or harm others. So, what to do about that? So, that, that will announce soon. I'll, I'm supposed to connect with her this afternoon to confirm it. The Los Angeles Community College District Blue Ribbon Committee is making recommendations will provide funding from the district to heighten security, safety, and training. We're still waiting for the board to release that report. That was a comprehensive report with Fire Department, Police Department, first responders, paramedics, just a whole series of different agencies, county, city, that have recommended what to do in disaster, in terms of preparedness, emergencies, as well as active shooter and other incidents. So, I've been waiting for that report. We all have, because there's recommendations in there, one of which is that we're each going to get an additional sheriff on campus. So, the funding will be available, and that's where I'm going to try to go after some of this additional funding. Current panic buttons will be activated in the library, HVAC, and other locations. This is turning out to be a bit of a chore, because apparently these buttons are old. So, we are assessing them, Rod. I've asked Rod to assess the library, HVAC, which are the newer ones. There seems to be some kind of a technological glitch with the new ones, some kind of software issue that we're trying to get our arms around. Apparently, the system's not talking to the initiating system for those panic buttons. So, we're trying to figure out, what does that mean? How do we fix it? And how much will it cost? If you recall, this was an initial build, LACC D proposal initiative, and as we built these buildings, we installed them, and then halfway through, they ended up saying, "Wait a minute, they're not working. There's something wrong here in the design." So, I've asked Rod to get to the bottom of that one, but that's what the issue is. And now LACC D Build is not promoting panic buttons, because they haven't figured out how to, how to get the correct ones installed. So, I just wanted to give you an update. That's where things are, but we're going to, Mission, solve the issue. We're going to solve that problem. The Crisis Awareness Response Team. We've adopted that wonderful term. It's no longer called Threat Assessment Team, which is what it used to be called. LACC calls their Behavioral Intervention Team, BIT. Everybody's got teams, but they call them, we've decided to move forward with the Crisis Awareness Response Team. Will report monthly our cases and disposition of those cases while not disclosing the identity of the students or employees. These monthly reports will be posted on the college website and reported to the college council. So, in order to maintain privacy of our students and employees and community members, we're not going to disclose the names or any of the situations with the incidents that occurred, other than to let you know, this month we investigated two. They were resolved. Something along those lines. So, you know that the CART is doing their job. Now, they've set up a monthly routine meeting, and in fact, they, I think you just, they just met last week, last Thursday, on a couple of issues. So, we will get that report out to you. Now, the Crisis Awareness Response Team, in my initial email, I left out two names. It's Vice President Danny Villanueva and Vice President Michael Allen. They are part of the team. Deputy Brown, Margaret Torres, who's our Health Center Director, Larry Vasendez, you all know. I put him on the spot last time and said, "Talk to Larry." So, I like that. Talk to Larry, talk to Larry. And then finally, Ludi Viegas is our student, Dean Ludi Viegas is our student discipline officer. So, they're meeting monthly. If you see any behaviors, or you see anything going on in the classroom, or at the bookstore, or wherever you are, that you would like them to look into. Maybe it's odd behavior. Maybe it's something out of place, which you can contact the sheriff. You know, you come in in the morning and everything is generally the same, and then sometimes you come in and you say, "Oh, why is that cart over there?" It's never over there. You know, feel free to make a call, you know, to say to the sheriff, "There's a cart over there. I don't know why that," or, "There's a car there that's here at 6:00 in the morning, and I don't know why that car is parked in that area." Things like that. Odd things that do occur, which brings up the point, and we discussed at the president's council. We're, of course, wanting our cadets and our sheriffs to be visible, and they are making their routines to be available. However, we can also be the eyes and ears of the campus. So, feel free, if you see something that you don't think makes sense, it's odd, or it's out of place, feel free to contact the sheriff or the response team, so they can look into it and move on it. So, I just wanted to make that, that comment. So, that's where we are. I'm excited that we, it looks like we're going to have some bond support for the speaker system. We're going to be close to purchasing our emergency kits, so that you have them, hopefully in January. I'm looking at in terms of ordering them in bulk and so forth, and installing them and all the good stuff. So, we will have a follow-up meeting once we get these tools. So, I think that, you know, we're in some ways, I'm really glad that faculty and staff in the community here at our college has brought this to, to the attention of the administration, but also to the district. I was a bit surprised that other colleges aren't thinking along these lines. So, now that it's on the agenda, I think they're going, "Okay, what can we do?" I think there's a sense on the active shooter side of the spectrum, the sense that sometimes things are inevitable. And my point with them was the point you made to me. Yes, but we should give our people the tools necessary and the training necessary to respond in the best way they can. So, having finished with that, I'm open to any questions on next steps or any other suggestions you may have. Yes, Cindy, please. Here's the mic. Oh, thank you for bringing that up. That's not in, on there. Yes, we discussed the locking system. The problem is that many of our buildings were built with locks outside the door. There are some buildings, there are some offices that have locks inside the door, which is a good thing. So, we're trying to discover, and I mentioned the, I don't know if I mentioned, the card lock issue. By the way, that was another one that had a glitch with the software system. But we're talking about, okay, look, if indeed you need to lock for right now, you will be notified where the, you know, where the shooter is, number one. Number two is, we're just going to have to live with it for right now, because there's some fire code issues that Wally's looked into. We're meeting with the fire department regarding those issues. The same thing with the windows. You know, remember you brought up that some of the windows just go halfway, and then I forgot professor brought up about you need a key for the window and those kind of issues. Well, we checked with the fire department, and again, there's some fire code issues. They were built that way for a reason. Obviously, if a shooter's there, or if there's an incident, get a chair and break the window. I mean, you got to do what you got to do, but the answer to the lock question is, we're still looking into it. Media arts, we're going to solve that for them, but for the newer buildings, I think we can find a way. It's the older buildings that we're, we're going to have to address, and if we're going to do inside locks, we're going to have to do a cost estimate, how much that would cost. Other questions?
Thank you. I was wondering about a few items here. One is the fire drill that we're going to have at the, before the end of the semester in November is great. I'm, I appreciate the complexity of the active shooter and coordinating with all the law enforcement and so on, but I do wonder if there's a way that we could have like a warm-up, you know, to this, because just getting the student's mindset ready, I think, would be helpful. And it may not be the whole nine yards, but I do think that something that's manageable even before the end of this semester is really important. I mean, hardly a week goes by now that we don't see some tragedy from a shooting. And, you know, so I would, I would like to see some kind of preliminary drill for that. And also, with the drills, I think we need to think about the faculty and the staff who may be working on the, in the evenings, or have a Monday, Wednesday schedule, or a Tuesday, Thursday schedule. We really need to cover all the bases, so that, you know, all of us have that ability, as well as having, you know, online information. But the actual drill is really important, so that we can just do what we need to do if we have to do it. And then you had mentioned the CART report, the monthly CART report, and of course, we respect students' privacy, employees' privacy, but I would like to know what the nature of the situation was. Was, you know, was this a threat of an assault? What, you know, what was going on? We don't need to know the names, but I think we have to have an idea of what some of the issues are on campus. Thank you.
I believe in the CLAR report, we can provide that information. The CLAR report is an annual report that we provide, law enforcement, law enforcement provides to the federal government on any crimes or issues on the campus. So, I think to answer your question, we could say, yeah, this month we had two incidents. One was a drunk student, another one, which is the kind of stuff we do come across. Another one was a student who was harming themselves, for instance. So, I think we can look at the CLAR report and whatever that report, which is public, we can provide that information. With regard to the drill, yes, I did talk to Captain Tartwiler about not having, having the comprehensive one in the spring, but we can do a preparation one for active shooter, which is basically the faculty saying, "If this occurs, here are the four steps you need to take, and here's my responsibility as a faculty member, here's your responsibility as students." Something along those lines. I think that that's not a problem. They can do that. And then the other point regarding Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday evening, that's an excellent point. So, as we plan these things out, both the preparation for the comprehensive active shooting in the spring, and also the fire drills and things like that, we should take that in consideration, perhaps do a couple different intervals of time, so that, you know, people who teach at night and students at night can experience that. So, that's a really good idea. So, I noted those, and I'll meet with the team, and we'll come up with some next steps.
Does that still happen? Is the Guild still involved in this? The Work Environment Committee was informed if batteries were stolen on a regular basis. Is that involved?
I think so. I know the Work Environment Committee does go to the college council, and they report issues, and we report back to the Work Environment Committee, things like stolen items, or individuals smoking cigarettes inside the class, stuff like that, issues with regard to safety as well. So, yes, but I'll double-check that with the college council. I know that I get those reports, and I'm assuming that Work Environment Committee gets those same reports, so. Well, okay, so this is an ongoing effort. The reason why we're having this town hall meeting is so you know that we're moving forward. I'm giving you a progress report. It isn't over until we move on several of these fronts. I want to thank the custodial staff and the maintenance and operations staff for responding to various specific kinds of things, like making sure we have lights and all our lights are working, issues like that, as well as reporting themselves what they're seeing. Oh, Martha, you have a question? Okay, let's talk about the building program, the bathrooms. Well, you'd be happy to know, all the bathrooms are done with the exception of Collaborative Studies. Oh, no, that's the elevator. Wally, you want to give a report on the bathrooms? I can't remember.
As far as the restroom remodels go, all the buildings are complete except for the IA. The student bathrooms on the, what is that, the southwest quadrant are still under construction. Should be done by February, correct? Isn't that what he said? End of January, beginning of February, the bathrooms by the academic affairs will be done around February 1st, and after that, I think that completes most of the bathroom
It is the bath, the hallway that they shut down last week. We have to go outside and around now.
Okay, so it's for a couple of weeks, because they need to expedite finishing the... Got it. Okay, great, great. So, Martha, we should be done by February 1st. Yes, question, Jax. The women's restroom downstairs, what's the situation with that?
Okay, we had a leak. I'm sure you noticed it was water on the floor, so we had a leak coming in through the wall. We're not exactly sure the source of the water, but we did alleviate that problem. So, as soon as that floor gets dried up and the wall gets dried up behind, that bathroom will be reopened.
Okay, what other bathrooms do we have to look at? By the way, my bathroom's in terrible shape, but they're, it's because of the Health Center, and I understand, you know, so, yes, it's, it'll occur. By the way, the Health Center will be completed end of February. By the way, the health center will be completed, um, end of February, that's the report we're getting, so we're gonna be able to move our health center out of the bungalow, and move into a brand-new, state-of-the-art health center, which, uh, is next to, uh, the business services area, used to be the bookstore. So, that's good news. We're gonna report all this to the college council on Thursday, we're gonna get a report from our college project manager, so things are starting to, the media arts is moving along, we're more than fifty percent done with media arts now, so that's good news. Uh, you can notice the sides are starting to be put up, and so, that'll be reported on Thursday as well, so we're excited about that. Other questions? Yes, Mary Lou, let me get it over to you.
I just have a comment, can we get, uh, like a laminated card with all the crisis intervention people's name and extensions, so we'll have it handy?
Good suggestion, we'll do that, and I should mention, I forgot something. I've asked Larry, Associate Dean Larry Resendez to assist us, uh, with what we're gonna call a, a green file. And this is almost completed, and this file will be on the website, it'll be green, and you click onto this file, and on that file, it'll give you very specific instructions, simple and straightforward, of how to determine, uh, behaviors of individuals that you may believe need assistance. So Larry, you'll be doing a training November 24th, from 12 to 1:30? Okay, hold on, let me get it to Larry.
So I'm calling it, it's a crisis awareness and intervention training for faculty, and we'll have forty minutes at the AFT Faculty Guild, it'll be myself and Michael Moore, therapist at our health center, and, like Dr. Perez said, we're gonna try to give some very straightforward tips on what you can be looking for in the class, or at your counter, wherever you might work, with a student who could be experiencing some distress, or causing distress, and what steps you can take. So there'll be kind of like a flow chart and different things like that.
Okay. Very good, so, uh, Terry, uh, I don't know if you've been asked to videotape the AFT Faculty Guild meeting, November 24th, but we'll discuss it, we'll figure it out. Yes, we'll videotape it, there will be handouts, right Larry? There'll be a PowerPoint handouts, we're gonna post it, uh, and it's getting close to that green file, because I want you to have that tool, so you'll know exactly what to do, and it may be, on the green file, we can go ahead and put Mary Lou's suggestion of the names and phone numbers and contact information of the CART team. Okay? So we can do that. Larry, thank you. Uh, Jaxx?
So ASO also recently approved the funds, we're doing a very similar folder as Larry's doing, but for students, so, uh, starting spring semester, we're gonna be handing those out as the free folder that comes with all the ASO stuff that we offer students. So your students are gonna get a very, very similar flow chart with all the information on campus as well as in the community as well, so you guys are gonna have eyes and ears, and they're also gonna be able to assist you in that.
Very good, very good, I mu- I have to congratulate Jaxx and ASO, they've been coordinating with DSPS and with Larry on this whole mental health initiative, and it, they're the ones that brought it to my attention a couple of months, or early in the fall, that we need to do more, Dr. Perez. And you know that I announced at the last meeting that we're providing services on Friday and Saturdays, so that way, students who can't get the assistance they need Monday through Thursday because of work schedules, or class schedules, Fridays will be, we can make appointments with them. Other questions? Yes, Steve?
I, uh, Ben saw our first playoffs, so they're going to playoffs this weekend, and our head coach, Louis, he's got, he's named Coach of the Year.
Yay, okay, Coach of the Year. Tara, we need to put that information on the weekly mission, Tara was there somewhere.
Send it out.
Send it out, please, that's good news. Where are you playing this weekend?
I'm playing now, I have, I'm playing next week.
All right, send it out, great, great news. Yes, Victor?
And then you move back, thirty minutes from there, and I have a question, in all the conversations that you had with the other campuses and whatnot, twenty, twenty-six years ago, when this campus was designed, uh, it was actually designed with a fence, we got drawings of it, and it wasn't a fence of a chain link or anything like that, but it was a wrought iron fence, it had beautiful landscaping all around, it was, because of the administration at that time and some issues that he had had with fencing people in, it was more about keeping people from coming, coming in, not from getting out, kind of thing. So, uh, I've talked numerous times with the Sheriff's Department about creating another type of fence of some sort, uh, creating points of access so they're able to focus at, at these different points. We've had a lot of people coming in to the campus, especially recently, these last few months, we've had, uh, on the weekends and whatnot, we've had things disappearing, and the sheriffs, as much as they're out and about, can't be out there twenty-four seven, I mean, they just can't be out there, you know, every minute of the day, of the day. So what happens is that, I think they're actually being watched and people are coming in on us. With that said, is there any conversation about putting the fence back around Michigan College? And like I said, doesn't that have to be a chain link fence, could be a nice wrought iron fence with a hedge around, it's something that just creates these points of access so we can focus cameras on these areas.
Well, good, see, Victor has institutional memory, I wasn't here twenty-six years ago, but, uh, good point, I know that we discussed having some hedges or some kind of, uh, shrubbery around, uh, when we discussed it last Friday with the other nine campuses, there was a sense that we don't wanna look like we're a prison, enclosing people inside, there was this kind of sense that we're an open access institution, we'd wanna be welcoming and inviting, but on the other hand, there are safety concerns, security concerns, so, uh, that's a topic that I'll bring up. I think, I think the point is, we, we, we need to have access points, so there could be four, or five, or six different access points, and if we move forward with the Student Services Building, which will be on Aldridge, we want that building to be sort of the entry building, or entryway for students and community and others, uh, because it'll be an icon building, the signature building, people will refer to that, park their cars and go to that. So, I will bring that up, I will discuss it with, uh, the bond, I'll discuss it with the chancellor, uh, is there any room to look at that design, especially if we get a new bond next year, we might wanna put money into that kind of wrought iron or some kind of, uh, fence.
As you mentioned, a, a fence, people automatically think chain link, they think barbed wire, they think, this is what, we know when you're talking about keeping people out, keeping people in, this is what they see. Again, going back to the original design, it wasn't that, it was a four-foot, five-foot wrought iron fence, it had nice shrubbery across it, and it just created access points, it didn't create that, that feel of being locked in or locked out, but it did create those points, so when, so you say fence, you really gotta kind of be a, aware of how people perceive when you say fence, so it's, you know, just creating these, these areas.
Thank you, Victor, I'll explore that and see if there's some, uh, movement we can do on that. I, I've been to the, other universities and colleges that have really nice, like brick, wrought iron, and it, you don't have a sense of being closed in with shrubbery. Yes, Terry? Oh, okay, I thought you were pointing me at the video. Uh, yes, we still have it, we still have that, I think, three acres, uh, on Hubbard, uh, it, it was swing space, it is swing space, that, once we build the Student Services Building, we're moving all those bungalows out of there where the sheriff is, and you know, the music, and the ESL, and the non-credit and all that, 'cause that's where the Student Services Building is going. And then all those bungalows would be put over there as swing space until the Student Services Building, uh, is built. So that is the original plan, that's, we use bond money to buy that acreage, so we can only use it for that purpose, we can't put other things in there, uh, without permission from the city, so we have to be careful how we use that property, for right now, we're just holding on to it, uh, I had various developers come to me, I'll build housing, I'll do this, I said, can't touch it, we need it for our Student Services Building, so my fingers are crossed that we are gonna, we're gonna be in a situation next year with the bond to, to have the funding to move forward, so, we'll, we'll work on that. By the way, the other thing I wanted to announce, Danny Vianwev and I, I've asked him to join me, uh, we're gonna go meet with the Deputy Director of Metro, and I'm trying to get the bus service changed, I've been working at this for, since I've been here, finally got it to the right people, uh, my understanding is, I think the 9:30 bus, Wally, or the, the bus that comes on Hubbard, leaves at 10, or 5 to 10, or 10:05, or something ridiculous, our students don't get out till 10:15 at the earliest, in some cases, so, we're gonna ask them to change their schedule and make it more frequent. We also are asking them to drive the bus down Aldridge, and do a turnabout at the Center for Math and Science and HVAC, and then have a bus stop right in front of, uh, where the bungalows are, so, that's what we're gonna request, because that way a student can take the bus, and then get to CMS, and then catch the bus to get to the main campus, so they don't have to walk if they don't want to. Yes, Margie?
How about the early morning classes, uh, can the bus come, um, a little bit earlier? Cause those poor kids are always twenty minutes to a half hour late, it's not their fault.
You got it, you got it, Margie, that's what we're gonna do. Fortunately, we did a major study, oh, four, five years ago, on this issue, and we had a request, and we even had a public hearing here on campus regarding that situation, and I have all that information, so it included earlier morning, changing the schedules, it also includes connections from other parts of the northeast San Fernando area, so I'm trying to solve that problem. It, it's not only our problem, but it's a problem for the Valley, uh, I just learned that Cal State Northridge, fifty percent of all their students live within ten miles of Cal State Northridge, so they use bus service to get to Cal State Northridge, 'cause they live in apartments and houses and so forth. Uh, the Valley students, which is more than a hundred thousand, if you, Cal State, us, Valley, Pierce, if you look at the total, they're moving around, uh, quite a bit every day, so we need relief from Metro, and that was the pitch we made, uh, two weeks ago, with the political folks behind us, saying, think about our students, they're the consumers of the buses, and they're talking about, oh, we need, uh, uh, rail, and we need all this stuff, well, that's nice, but what about the buses? Cause a lot of people still take the bus, right? Now, the good news is that there is a bill in the legislature, and if it passes, they're gonna give free bus passes to students, so, we're pushing for that. And, uh, so there's some movement going on with Metro, and I'm glad that, uh, we're gonna meet with the Deputy Director and try to get that solved. Martha? The lights on, the, okay, the lights on the side of the golf course, is that our property, or is that the county?
That's, that's the county, and I've got numerous messages in with them to get those, are you talking about them being on right now? Yeah, they're off, right. Right, I got, we're on, we're in the queue, Danny has been trying to get ahold of them, he's written emails, I got ahold of somebody on the phone last week, we're in the queue, they got, they said it's seven to ten days before they can come out and evaluate what's going on, but it's in the queue, they have no idea what's going on.
Okay, well, you know, great, Victor, I'm glad you guys are moving on it. Um, I did have a me, meeting with our supervisor, uh, t- three weeks ago, and I, I said, you know, we need immediate solutions to some of this, including the Alcariso Golf Course, our relationship with them, uh, some issues there, so I'm, you know, if need be, we'll contact the supervisor's office and get her to call these people and say, hey, let's move on it. Tomorrow night, no, Thursday night, uh, Steve Rize and I, and, uh, you're bringing Sandra and, uh, and Joe, right? We're gonna meet with the Silmar Independent Baseball League Board, I wanna thank Carlos for helping me, uh, smooth some things over with a couple board members, uh, we're gonna meet with them to talk about a relationship with that property that they own, and we co-own with them, and of course, we want our athletic fields out there, so, uh, light a candle for us that we can convince them, I think we will, and if we can develop a partnership, memorandum of understanding, we're gonna be able to put our fields, soccer, softball, NCAA baseball field, and, uh, and have a really great athletic program, we're looking forward to that. Yes, Margie? Oh, okay. Hi! Okay, any other questions? So, okay, I really, I've taken all, oh, Mary Lou?
Sorry, everybody, but, um, you know, the restroom's over on where the Culinary Arts used to be, the new ones, there, there is no ventilation, and I was wondering if there were plans to put any ventilation in there.
Victor, Wally, uh, ventilation in the old Culinary Arts?
Yeah, those, we had an issue with the exhaust fan, did you realize that it actually was on the wheel, busted an axle, changed out the belt, changed out the wheel, broke again, it's backed up, it's running again, there is ventilation in them, uh, I don't know if you've been in them recently, but there's a lot of air moving in there.
Good, okay, so, we had a busted, ongoing maintenance and repairs, always on our agenda. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we've taken notes, so your suggestions, we're moving forward on those, um, I think we're moving in a good direction, we will give you progress reports as we get to the next steps. I wanna thank Rod for his hard work, Wally in particular, for assessing the technology needs, so, um, thank you all, we have a great holiday season coming, uh, I don't know how we're gonna do all the things that, everybody's Julius, I know, it's a lot, everybody wants to have the Christmas or holiday party at the same time, and, so we're gonna be busy, but it's gonna be fun, it's gonna be a lot of fun. So, uh, thank you all for coming, have a good day.